It is November thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. This is a regular meeting of the Dickinson City Council. We're going to call this meeting to order at seven oh two. Your own call.
Here.
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 Thank you. If you'll please rise for the invocation led by our esteemed Reverend Johnny Simpson, followed by the pledge to both flags by Councilman Suterman.
Let us pray. Oh Lord our God, how excellent is your name in all the earth. We thank you for this day and we thank you for every good and perfect earth that comes from above. We ask a blessing upon our government, our national officials, our state officials, our city officials. We ask a blessing over this meeting that it will be effective and efficient and good work can be done. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Please join in the pledge of both flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our bestest flag, I pledge allegiance to the East Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you Pastor. Thank you Councilman Suterman.
She said thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
We have no proclamations this evening, so we'll start with council comments and we'll start with Councilman Suterman.
I knew you were going to do that.
Oh, you're not praying?
That's fine. Thank you all for all being here tonight. We appreciate it when you come and visit with us. I had distinct pleasure a couple of weeks ago on a Friday to go out to Hughes Road Elementary and serve turkey dinners to a bunch of really neat kids and a whole lot of mamas and daddies and grandpas and grandmas. And if you have kids or grandkids out there and you didn't make it, put it on your calendar for next year. It's kind of a neat project to go to. Festival of lights, what can I say? Rain, rain, go away. If you've got some time this weekend, we could sure use the help. Eight AM to four PM Saturday and Sunday. You don't have to have a high skill level, just got to be able to follow some simple directions, but we could sure use anybody that would like to come out. Thank you ma'am.
Thank you Councilman Henderson.
Thank you Mayor. Thank you everybody for coming tonight. It's good to see everybody. Yesterday was Veterans Day observed. Is there any other veterans in the room besides esteemed colleagues of Reverend King, Councilman Charlie Suterman, myself? I'd like to thank you all for your service. And I got to say for myself, it was an outstanding Veterans Day weekend. We had a really good time. Saturday, we had a Veterans Day parade in the city Dickinson. It was a little chilly. I was pretty impressed with a lot of those ROTC kids that wore short sleeve shirts and they were troopers. Next week is Thanksgiving's Day, Thanksgiving Day. The Dickinson VFW is going to be hosting a Thanksgiving feast, community dinner, this Saturday. Unfortunately, as much as I do enjoy being there, I will be out of town myself, so I'm going to miss it, but I would like to invite everybody here to do it. The last other thing is Thanksgiving week is one of the most heavily traveled holidays of the year. So, just going without saying, everybody be very careful. This weather is not doing anybody any favors. If anybody's going to be on the road, be ultra careful. And the last thing I'd say is, as I was sitting out here at our workshop, I don't think everybody that's sitting out here right now was there. Take the time, please, to check the city website. John back there is videoing. Appreciate it. There's a lot of outstanding information passed around with us during this workshop talking about how the streets in our city are going to be repaired, how many are going to be made of concrete, how many are going to be initially, keep that in mind, this is a work in progress. We're going to have streets of concrete, streets that will be rebuilt down to the base with asphalt. There will be some streets that will be overlaid, knowing that they'll be worked on later on. I would ask that everybody communicates this to the people in the city. There is progress. No, it's hard to see sometimes. Just like I said, communicate, communicate, share. There's a lot of people on social media that agree or disagree and that's absolutely their prerogative, but the thing that I have felt like I've had to deal with more than anything else is misinformation. There's lots of people that are showing up here. Zach, it's good to see you again. Share this information on Facebook or whatever social media. The only thing I always ask is please make sure you have the right information. I think everybody on this council, including the mayor, our phone numbers are available on the website and our email addresses. If you hear something that doesn't sound quite right, feel free to give us a call. We'll answer it. Our esteemed city administrator here has done an outstanding job setting up this program and we continue to support him and it's comprehensive, it makes sense, so it's not that hard to figure out. I'll quit preaching at that point. I think we got somebody else that's good at that. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
Unfortunately, the person who's good at preaching isn't me. First off Charlie, you know, I've served Thanksgiving lunch before for the school district. You know, it really makes you, after you've done that, what makes you appreciate those cafeteria ladies?
Boy, yes.
You do that every day.
Absolutely.
Of course, it's nothing like that, but trust me, it's something and it's well done and some of those children, that's what they're going to have for Thanksgiving unfortunately. Also, as you pay attention to what Bruce was saying, that you pay attention to things that will be on their agenda tonight, there's going to be some approval of some contracts and stuff like this. This should show people out there that the city hasn't been just sitting there doing nothing. It takes time to get these contracts approved and money available to go forth and pay the people that have bid the contracts. So, some of the criticism, of course, criticism's always easy to throw on everybody, but repeatedly, you know, we're told, you know, time and time again that, you know, it just takes time to get the money, get the contracts, get the work started. And I'm sure that once we approve these contracts today, or tonight, work's not starting tomorrow either, but hopefully it's started in a timely manner. And this is not just the way this government works, it's the way all government works. And fortunately, unfortunately, most of this money comes from either state or feds and they're in no big hurry. So, you know, just bear with us, you know, it's going to work out, it takes a little time, but as they say, Rome wasn't built today either and neither will those streets repaired overnight, so thank you.
Thank you. I just want to remind everybody, the Thanksgiving community dinner is this Saturday at the VFW Hall from eleven thirty to one thirty, I believe. And if you remember, if you were a recipient from the Tucci monies after Harvey, Tucci is going to be there, they're going to have some informational tables to kind of tell you about what they do. They're also asking for, if you took one of the little tin cans to fill it with coins, you know, that you throw on your counters and stuff, they're going to be asking for those back. So, we really need to support this group that came out and supported us because I know they've already been in Florida, in Carolinas, California. They've really been helping a lot of people around the country and, you know, pay it forward, as they say. Keep Dickinson Beautiful has a grease recycling bin located over there by the gazebo, by the library, and it's for cooking oil that you have at your home. It's not for businesses, so if you do a lot of frying over the holidays or anytime, feel free to come over and dump that grease in that bin and it gets recycled into fuel. And I want to thank the Dickinson Bio Group again for addressing some of the hotspots around town and picking up the litter and debris. I think that's all I have. Councilman Deeds?
Thanks Mayor. I'd like to welcome everyone also. Just to reiterate, I think Bruce covered most, or Councilman Henderson covered most of what I had listed here, but we did have a great time at the Veterans Parade Saturday and even though it was cold and we had to ride inside the truck instead of the back of it, we had a great time. I didn't realize there were so many junior ROTC groups in the counties surrounding school districts, but it was quite a turnout. And thank you to all veterans for your service and what you've given to this country, and to this city. Just to give a few more details on what happened in the workshop, what Councilwoman Deed said earlier is that we just approved a path forward on redoing in various farms, thirteen miles of street, a total cost of about thirteen million dollars. These are preliminary, preliminary numbers, but keep in mind, our total budget is right at nineteen million, so this is a big project for this, this community and we're looking forward to moving on this. The only other thing I had is I would hope that the city administration is meeting with tax hot, if not they need to. Just because they've started construction right away, demolition of the freeway, they still need to maintain mowing and weed control and all that around that overpass. Also, they need to take a look at the detention pond at six forty-six and the bio has totally overgrown. There's weeds growing up the fence, it's a mess, so. And the big steel plate on five seventeen is theirs, it's a sewer man over there collapsed and you need to fix that, it's been about three months now. That's all I had there. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Decker?
Yes, good evening, especially to the new faces, the older faces pretty grateful. Dickinson, boy, they're going by district, that's a good thing, especially from a small town like this with Harvey being a big problem, big pain. There's so many things that are going on, I think for everybody that happens to be here, we just finished two street, well, one and a half streets, rest of them they ended up through Palm, and that money was from ten years ago. Ike, it had to be used by the end of this year or you would lose it. They just happened to be two streets that were engineered and they were shovel ready, as I call it, but you've got to sit back, these people are thinking things are going to be done overnight. First of all, it's got to dry for a while to get to it, but ten years ago, this money was not. It's hard to believe, but that's how slow, that's how things go. You pay your taxes on time, but you can't get the return on your money when you're damaged like that Dickinson is terrible. And during this workshop, I didn't ask the question then, but I'm wondering, what's happening to Hughes Road? You've got two schools, I think Reverend King expressed that at some point in time, but there's two schools, every time it rains, I think it's rained four times since Harvey. Where I live is Tanglebire, it's Tanglebire ditch, the water's coming from both ways, down the street, one third of the way up the driveways. And the women on the street, they got, it's not just a service PKSD, they'll call me when that water starts coming up. What's going to happen? Well, my wife hasn't got over it yet, she's still worried, but if it was me and I talked to the gentleman out there, you can look at the plan. Cobert's collapsed, you send a camera down there, which we don't have a camera in the city, you send it down there, if it wasn't bad, you put a lining in and you hook up steam to it and it sits. It's better than damn concrete. And that was actually going through, it took maybe twenty or thirty years to eat through the concrete. That stuff is guaranteed, that was technology from, I think retired, nineteen years, ten years before that, maybe thirty years ago. But that water on Hughes Road, if we're going to keep that road there, we've got to pick it some way so the water, when it rains, they get to the pile, that's all it wants to do. And it's going to come over every time. My wife and I drove it, the last rain, it's six inches overnight, everything happens overnight. And it was eleven thirty nine, and there were seven or eight different places where the water was going over Hughes Road into neighborhoods. The school was a lake, I don't know if they have school that day, it seems like there was a school every other day, I talked to a gentleman on the board. I said, "All I've heard is when one school shuts down, you can't shut them all down," but that one was flooded. So, there's a lot of questions I have about where our tax revenue, how it goes. So, I'm going to say there's close to seventy or more percent that are undersized, cobert. Thank you.
Thank you Councilman King.
Yeah, thank you Mayor. Council, city administrator and city attorney, acting city secretary, all our city staff certainly appreciate all our citizens for their presence here tonight, participating in our city government meeting on this cold November night. And we certainly encourage us to be conscious and cognizant of the temperatures that they drop and protecting our investment as far as our pipes and plants and certainly our pets during this particular two-day cold snap with another one coming behind it. As was already stated, certainly want to wish all veterans that are in the audience tonight and those here on council, names have been called for their service to our great nation, to the Marines like Chief Ron Morales and Kerry Neves, who served in one of the greatest branches of the military in this country and has ever known the United States Marine Corps. We wish them a happy two hundred and forty-third birthday on November tenth, Saturday was the Marine Corps birthday and all our balls was fantastic. For the first time in my military experience, I had the honor of being the eldest Marine at a cake cutting ceremony and so I received the first slice of cake as the elder Marine. I was also a guest speaker at a Marine Corps cake cutting ceremony as well, so it was such a great privilege to maybe do that, having served this nation and having served overseas and in combat, it's good to be home and we do have the greatest nation on the face of the earth and we do have the strongest and most powerful elite military in the world as well, so they're forced to be recognized. By condolences to the Wheeler family, services will be held at the Great Old Baptist Church this coming Saturday at eleven eight AM. And a notice to the Wheeler family as Councilman Decker's already stated, hats off and supports to the Dickinson Gators who didn't make the playoffs, second in district. We play in Pearland, orders in Pearland, looking forward to rolling past Pearland and facing North Shore. North Shore has given us a lot of fried money the last few years, but we believe that we can overcome North Shore and proceed on to Katy and then further on into state. I do believe and we're hoping that everyone else in the audience believes that the Dickinson Gators can make it to the state championship playoff in Dallas in twenty eighteen. We have some certainly outstanding coaching and great group of kids in Dickinson. On October eighteenth, I attended the HGAC regular meeting, that's not in our program, so I'll pass the minutes and as well as the program to you. There was a couple of things on there I'd like city administrator to look into and we talked about, one dealt with the plans and projects review committee, you can look at that when you receive it. It deals with the Economic Development Administration Grant, Economic Development Administration Grant, you heard of that? Okay, for Hurricane Harvey and there are resources available of the economic development route and there was over one hundred twenty-nine million, one hundred nineteen thousand dollars provided that up for five hundred eighty-seven million dollar grant for the HGAC area, seven hundred sixty thousand to University of Houston, three hundred twenty thousand to Harris County flood for economic purposes. And I'm sure that we have a lot of economic needs, especially some of the businesses that we have lost as a result of Hurricane Harvey that could certainly use these revenues to attract and to create economic opportunities for the city of Dickinson. So, I didn't see our name on the list of the those that were awarded grants, however, the door has not closed, applications are still being accepted. And so, we want to certainly encourage the city of Dickinson to put forth its application for the grant and we hopefully receive money, so I know we did for the market district. I think the mayor talked about it at the last council meeting and certainly we're in need and certainly will appreciate those funds. November the first, I went to the Home Rule Caucus, Home Rule City Caucus for HGAC. I was re-elected as a board member for HGAC as representative for the city of Dickinson now representing also the Home Rule Cities for HGAC, twenty-five thousand population or less, and it was a powerful meeting talking about the things that we need to do as far as our cities were concerned. Over one point five billion dollars are used now through HGAC buyback by board and nine one one district exploring opportunities for the elderly justice and that was another great project for HGAC and I'll pass that information on for its elderly abuse is concerned. And we do have an aging city and certainly want to make sure our citizens that are aging will be able to age gracefully and with peace and prosperity and the joy of their days and not have to experience abuse. And certainly, that program is a successful program for HGAC. This past Saturday, I was able to attend the parade, I took a group of kids to San Francisco State University for Bad Cat Day and getting kids ready for college, but I know that the Veterans Day parade is always and has always been great success. Finally, the Thanksgiving, community Thanksgiving service will be at the Faith United Methodist Church, Pastor Johnny Simpson's church, and we invite and encourage the community to come out and supports the empty stocking program which supports the children of our community to be able to receive Christmas gifts. And if you just want, make a donation to the empty stocking program, that would be a fantastic thing to do. Thousands of dollars are needed to be able to purchase these requests from our DISD kids that would not have a Christmas, I think I heard Councilman Wilson indicate that many of them may not have a meal for Thanksgiving and certainly men that may not have gifts for Christmas, but they are remembered through the empty stocking interfaith care group program so they can have Christmas gifts. Each church generally takes out an empty stocking and fills that request and that can be done also. And so, you can contact, I think it's Faith First United Methodist Church that generally headquartered and have meetings there, Pastor Jack Mackens in that location, but certainly our kids deserve a great Christmas and this particular program affords and allows them to have that. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you. And the, I'm sorry, tell me again when the service is?
Yes, the community Thanksgiving service will be Tuesday, November twentieth, seven PM at First, at Faith United Methodist Church, it was at twenty-second Avenue G, twenty-second Avenue G at seven o'clock. And it'd be nice, Mayor, if you'd like to do a proclamation or something like that, is the empty stocking, you familiar with the empty stocking?
Thank you Councilman. Item six is reports. Item A is the update on the activities of the Dickinson Bio Watershed Partnership. Councilman Decker?
Yes ma'am, thank you very much. Had a meeting today, ten o'clock. Twenty-four cities didn't show up. We got a form, that's good.
Oh wow.
Amazing. What's still missing are the people that dumped the water in the pile up at the Zoria Manville Allen. They continually don't want to show up. We had two things that are of importance and that had to be things that we may be doing in the future. Well, all we can do, we don't have the money, all we can do is recommend. Two of them are that are being, that will probably be up next month, bypass of the pile that will be in Dickinson, we don't have the land, so I don't know where that's going to come from, and a gate and a possible pump at the pile at Dickinson. I don't know what we leave, these are the first two things that should be discussed. We've got a meeting December fourth, but we've got a new woman, the mayor of Santa Fe and a young man got re-elected in Lake City. He's chairman, they're interested in seeing what they can do and I'm glad to see the young ones coming in and they'll pick up reins on the older ones. That's not, we're not getting much help in Dickinson. We haven't, I still don't see it. We're so small, as you want to see that we're here tonight, the funding, we have to use our money, we haven't got the money. Thing is not that quick to give us anything, that's why I mentioned ten years ago we just finished using that money. But that's all that I can add, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilman Decker? Item B is an update of the Public Works Project. Brian Millard?
Good evening Mayor and Council. Public Works Department has continued pothole patching throughout the city. Additional work was completed along Hughes Road, Pin Oak, Long Shadow, Oak Drive, Church Street and Oak Park over the past several weeks. Approximately four hundred or five hundred potholes were filled during that time. On Winding Way, we completed additional shoulder work. Over there, approximately fifty percent of that is completed. We're waiting on our material to dry up so we can continue and finish that work and get that project counted out. And then, on culvert installation, we completed three culvert installations before dealing with again some more rain which, you know, wet the material and has prevented us from completely addressing the backlog over there. With that, available for any questions.
Yeah, I appreciate the mowing that I'm seeing in Dickinson. Certainly appreciate that always, as Councilman Deed said, there's always work to be done. Of course, eleven square mile city and just a lot of streets that have easements to cover as well, I do appreciate what I've seen as far as the improvement in the streets. Twenty-second Street and Avenue F, I think it is, I had a resident, she was coming to our meeting last week, but we had the council, and she was complaining to me on a number occasion about twenty-second and Avenue, between F and G as far as the potholes and the depth width of those potholes, if you're not already addressing.
Okay, I'll make it over there.
Councilman Deeds?
On Winding Way, you had mentioned a couple of meetings ago that drainage desilting was part of that project. When, what's the plan on that?
Not so much desilting, but recreating the ditches in-house. Winding Way isn't one of the areas that was identified as damaged in the, I think we'll see a little bit later, but that's something that we're going to be doing in-house is that.
Well, no, you said it was part of the project. I asked you if it was part of the project a couple of meetings ago and the answer was yes, and I was wondering where you are on that.
Have you started? Righting the ditches?
Oh, have we started? Not at this point, the water's been standing over there and that's also prevented us from addressing that, so.
Yeah.
Once we complete the shoulders and the water.
I noticed there's water standing on the southeast corner of the airpin where the, you got pipes under the road, there's a major outfall too.
Where it goes to try the property in the back there.
Yeah, that whole ditch going to the outfall is holding water, so there's some kind of blockage where it discharges.
That's going to be part of what we address as well is there's a good bit of debris over there that we need to, I think, probably.
Pastor Jack Mackens in that location. But certainly, our kids deserve a great Christmas. And this particular program affords and allows them to have that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And the, I'm sorry, tell me again when the service is?
Yes, the Community Thanksgiving Service will be Tuesday, November twentieth, seven P.M. At First, at Faith United Methodist Church was at Twenty-Second Avenue G. Twenty-Second Avenue G. at seven o'clock. And it'd be nice, Mayor, if you'd like to do an application or something like that. Is the empty stocking, you familiar with the empty stocking?
Thank you, Councilman. Item six is reports. Item A is the update on the activities of the Dickinson Bio watershed partnership. Councilman Decker?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Had a meeting today, ten o'clock. Twenty-four cities didn't show up. We got a form, that's good.
Oh, wow.
Amazing. What's still missing are the people that dumped the water in the bio up at Missouri, Manville. They continually don't want to show up. We had two things that are of importance. And that had to be things that we may be doing in the future. Well, all we can do, we don't have the money. All we can do is recommend. Two of them are that are being, that would probably be up next month. A bypass of the bio. That will be in Dickinson. We don't have the land, so I don't know where that's going to come from. And a gate and a possible pump at the bio, at Dickinson. I don't know what we leave. These are the first two things that should be discussed. We've got a meeting December fourth. But we've got a new woman, the mayor of Santa Fe. And a young man got re-elected in Lake City. He's chairman, they're interested in seeing what they can do. And I'm glad to see the young ones coming in. They'll pick up reins on the older ones. That's not, we're not getting much help in Dickinson. We haven't. I still don't see it. We're so small, as you want to see that we're here tonight, the funding. We have to use our money. We haven't got the money. Thing is not that I quit to give us any. That's why I mentioned, ten years ago, we just finished using that money. But that's all that I can add, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilman Decker? Item B is an update of the Public Works Project. Brian Millard?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Public Works Department has continued pothole patching throughout the city. Additional work was completed along Hughes Road, Pin Oak, Long Shadow, Oak Drive, Church Street, and Oak Park over the past several weeks. Approximately four hundred or five hundred potholes were filled during that time. On Winding Way, we completed additional shoulder work. Over there, approximately fifty percent of that is completed. We're waiting on our material to dry up so we can continue and finish that work and get that project counted out. And then, on culvert installation, we completed three culvert installations before dealing with again some more rain, which wet the material and has prevented us from completely addressing the backlogs over there. With that, available for any questions?
Yeah, I appreciate the mowing that I'm seeing in Dickinson. So, appreciate that always, as Councilman Dietz said, there's always work to be done. Of course, eleven square mile city, and just a lot of streets, a lot of easements to cover. So, I do appreciate what I've seen as far as the improvement in the streets. Twenty-Second Street and Avenue F, I think it is. I had a resident, she was coming to our meeting last week, but we had the council. And she was complaining to me on a number occasion about Twenty-Second Avenue between F and G as far as the potholes and the depth width of those potholes, if you're not already addressing.
I'll make it over there.
Councilman Dietz?
On Winding Way, you had mentioned a couple of meetings ago that drainage desilting was part of that project. And what's the plan on that?
Not so much desilting, but recreating the ditches in-house. Winding Way isn't one of the areas that was identified as damaged in the, I will see a little bit later. But that's something that we're going to be doing in-house is that...
Well, no, you said it was part of the project. I asked you if it was part of the project a couple of meetings ago. And the answer was yes. And I was wondering where you are on that.
Have you started?
Cleaning the ditches? Oh, have we started? Not at this point. The water's been standing over there. And that's also prevented us from addressing that. So, once we complete the shoulders and the water...
I notice there's water standing on the southeast corner of the hairpin. Where the, you got pipes under the road, there's a major outfall too.
Where it goes into private property in the back there.
Yeah, that whole ditch going to the outfall is holding water. So, there's some kind of blockage where it discharges.
That's going to be part of what we address as well is there's a good bit of debris over there that we need to, I think, probably get in there, cut out and remove from there to get the water flowing.
Is that part of the street, right?
Or the desilting?
It's part of the street project.
It is part of your project?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments for Brian? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Item seven is public comments. At this time, any person with city-related business may speak to the council. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the council may not deliberate. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes per individual speaker. First up is Pamela, Pamela Gilery. You state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Pamela Gilery. I live at forty-seven oh five Fortieth Street in Nickelstone. I'd like to address drainage and culverts this evening. As you are probably well aware, the Galveston newspaper has had several articles out in the last couple of weeks about our city. Well, not all of our ditch and drainage problems came from Harvey. I've been a resident on Fortieth Street for fifteen years, along with my husband. We have paid our drainage annual fee faithfully. And I have also gone online to your website and requested on more than one occasion to have our ditches graded between Texas Avenue and Colorado Street. And I have submitted work orders numerous times, but to no avail. Well, October twenty-fifth, in the Galveston paper, I was shocked to see that even though we had paid our seventy-two dollars, now the city of Dickinson has done away with the drainage fee. To quote what was in the newspaper, it had become too cumbersome for staff to try to collect it all. And I believe that our city had only collected fifty percent. And it was just too time-consuming for our staff. I did send a letter to our mayor and Mr. Decker because he was also quoted in the newspaper. And he made a very good point stating that some of our tax money, even though we have now another tax increase, should be utilized for drainage maintenance. And as a result, the money would not be refunded. And it's not necessarily about the seventy-two dollars. It's just that when I've paid it faithfully all of these years, now all of a sudden, my money has just gone away. I have not received any response in writing from anyone. And I directed my letter to Mayor Masters, Mr. Chris Heard, and Mr. Louis Decker. And I have not received any response to date. But let me assure you, fifteen years of a drainage issue, our front ditch line in front of our home on Fortieth Street, we can get a rain for thirty minutes, two or three inches, and it holds water for days. The culvert is an eighteen-inch culvert, and it is filled halfway, I would say nine inches, with silt and dirt. I don't know if the city plans to get a vector service out there, but vectoring these culverts is the way to go. It's modern technology. And it clears the system very quickly. It's not as time-consuming as getting staff with a bunch of shovels. That's not going to work. But I'm asking you respectfully, all of you this evening, I would like a refund of my seventy-two dollars. Because if I'm getting the same service as my neighbor who never intended to pay the drainage fee, then it's only fair to treat everyone the same.
And I'll just tell you this, the letter is in draft. It has not been mailed yet. But it is in draft. I left town and I just got back. So, it is, it has not been signed. But the bill I believe you received was for twenty-seventeen, and we did have drainage projects in twenty-seventeen. So, no one's getting a bill for twenty-eighteen.
Yes, ma'am, I understand that. But the article in the newspaper said that no one would be getting the refund of the payment that was just made. And the payment was made in February.
For twenty-seventeen.
Yes, ma'am, but I haven't received a new bill yet, nor has anyone else.
Right, because we made that decision before we sent the twenty-eighteen bills out. So, no one will be getting the twenty-eighteen bill.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shirley Scott?
My name is Shirley Scott, and I live at fifty-one oh four Thirty-Ninth Street. And I've been here a number of times. And I, like Pamela, I have sent in work orders and such, did get anything done. But I'm here tonight to tell you that that building finally got torn down. That I've been working on since I came back to Dickinson. I mean, I don't know what happened. Well, I do know what happened. But I can't believe it, it's finally done from behind my house. And they did a good job of cleaning up too. And that's not usual. That's very unusual, that they actually clean up the whole thing. And I've got one thing to ask you about that. Don't let them bring in a flea market. Don't let them bring in car park stuff there and all that kind of stuff. It's probably, it's probably zoned as like commercial, I think.
Probably.
But please, you know, let's not have any more of that kind of stuff. We got enough. You have a young lady who's working for you now, her name is King. She's very good. I tell you that, if I call her, I'll get some kind of result. There was a house on my street that had a pool. And I talked to y'all about that. And you guys are just still luckier than whatever, than Stan, I guess, because nobody ever drowned in that pool. It's finally done, finally done. And they even were forced to clean up around there. First, they took it down and then they left it there. And I think she went back over and discussed it. It's not mine, it belongs to my dad, you know, all this kind of stuff. But it finally got done. And so, I really appreciate that. Now, she saw to it that an illegal water line had taken up. And that had been there. And I had told someone about that, but nothing's ever been done. And then they would pass on the other side of my street at Moe. First time, I lived there like nineteen years. I think this is the first time. Didn't do any ditch, and didn't really get all the shoulder. But he made a pass at it. A funny thing, there's a stop sign right there on Thirty-Ninth Street. That stop sign was totally covered in vines. You could not see what that stop sign was. And we kind of had a bet going as to how long we would take for the city to do something about that. And I never reported it. But anyway, it's about thirty dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Rosemarie Maro?
My name is Rosemarie Maro. I live on Fifty-Five Hundred Lillian Drive in Dickinson, unfortunately. I've been there for nineteen years almost. I've been coming here since two thousand and seven to have my road and drainage done something too. It's, you know, getting very irritated when you read in the paper, just like these people read in the paper. My street's not listed on their deed fix. I don't have a street. I can't seem to make y'all understand how bad this road is and also how bad the drainage is out that way. I've given you pictures, y'all have all seen it, and nothing's been done. And I don't know, this is going on like twelve, thirteen years. And last year, I was told that my road was going to be something done to it on this year and nothing has been done yet. I don't know, something like, am I going to be on the list or am I not going to be on the list of this street? Because back in two thousand and seven, when my husband was still living, we came here. At that time, Mr. Armstrong built a house back there on Calvert. And they got all aware of it and built them a wetland. It took him like three months just to haul in dirt. This was like maybe ninety-six loads of dirt a day or more, just filling him so that he could build. That wasn't including all the concrete trucks. That maybe it's like two and a half acres of that back there, everything, all the other materials. And he literally tore up the street. We had no street. Mr. Callis was over the road department at that time. And he agreed with us, my husband and I, that our street was badly in that shape. And at the time, I was told again, y'all had no money. And remember, this is before I came in two thousand and eight. And we were told that we could go in there and put in like two inches of tar on top just to surface. First, our roof is going to go and level it off, all the potholes and everything, and come in with that tar. Then, that road was going to, it may last like two or three years at the most, he said. And then, he said, Ms. Road and Mr. Road, I want y'all first on the list after that to have your road repaired. Well, at that time, then after that, I had thirty people in my family that were pretty old. And so, I didn't get to do anything until two thousand and fourteen, so back there, and reached to y'all again. And I still don't have anything done. The road is crumbling. It may not have potholes like Long Shadow or some of these other people that are coming here and talking to you about. But it has this tar, this crumbling happens. I have drainage problems out there. Every time it rains down, the water goes on the road. I have a pond, a big one in the back of my yard. It's levelled, and all the water drains my way. I had to hire someone to come and dig trenches along my fence line so that the water could go off my property and go and down into bio. Well, unfortunately, it has a hard time going down to that bio because y'all came in now and put half of the street in concrete. Well, on each side, there is ditches. They have not been maintained at all. There are growed up, no water can rain down there. Furthermore, Mr. Lightfoot who lives on the very end of the street told me that nominated a place where you can back up there and turn around while the culvert was slowed off. Anyway, so that stops the water. We also found out that Texas City is kind of doing something down on Wetzel. And there's a big drainage ditch down there that's going to go all the way back to there. Mr. Armstrong, just this past week, I was sending it to him. All of a sudden, I look out my kitchen window and I have this big drag line, it's a back hole, coming down my street and it's going down his way. I called up here to ask, what's going on? What is he doing now? I have no idea what he's doing. I haven't seen it leave yet. But, you know, I have so much trouble out there, it's unreal. We have no police protection, no nothing out there. And why in two thousand and four, we got incorporated? Because when we built out there, we were in the county and we were taken care of. And my street has not been surfaced since nineteen ninety-five. So, that's a long time. And I have no road. I mean, you can come down there, no more you turn on my street, it's Texas City. But then, when you go a little ways, then it becomes Dickinson, all the way to the bio. And you can tell when you come into Dickinson city limits. And this road is crumbling. Of course, straight ahead of me, half of it is concrete. Y'all stopped at Calvert. And that's because the man that lives back there, all the way down the bio, agreed to pay for the concrete if y'all would go ahead and set the forms of that. But I don't know why, there's like three houses that hits Texas City and you've left us. Now, everybody has to go down my street to get back there to those homes back there. And, you know, I need some help back there. I want to know, is my street ever going to get down or not?
Yes.
But when? I mean, am I on this list? Because I wasn't on the list, it was in the paper at all. And I've been here, I don't know how many times, telling you about this. And also, I've been telling you about the drainage, how bad it is that way. And, you know, it's just, it's unreal. And for long, I won't have a road. I understand, you think, well, when you come down that road, well, it looks fine, it's no chug holes or anything like that. But really, when you walk it, it's not. And I also have two chug holes that I took to on each of my driveways. I've been, how many work orders I put in? I called in this week, and a gentleman said, well, you have to do this. I said, I already did that. You have to do that, I already did that. You have to do this, I already did that. I said, I don't know what else to do. And he said, well, we'll have somebody out to fix those chug holes. Y'all even, Texas City even, they came over, they said that was your responsibility. Nobody has fixed them yet. I don't know what else to do. I can't get any help out there whatsoever, whatsoever. And, you know, I'm just tired of coming up here and complaining, you know, and being a bad person, but I just need help out there.
We'll take care of it, but I can't tell you when, I'm sorry. But we'll take care of it.
When these days? Whenever I get flooded or whatever.
If I gave you a date, I'd be lying, so I don't know, I don't know when.
Well, I don't understand why, I don't want to be, I mean, since two thousand and seven I've been coming here, why isn't my street on that list? More so than these people, they've been having problems since Harvey. I've been since two thousand and seven. And that's why I don't understand. Why am I put off and up because I'm a woman and I'm coming up here and right here? I don't think that's right. I mean, I have issues just like anybody else. And I don't understand why half of my street got concrete and why didn't all get it? I mean, if you're going to do it, do all of it at one time.
I agree.
I mean, it doesn't seem right. And just because Mr. Armstrong does anything he wants to, he can do anything he wants to out there. And that's not right either. I've even reported to you when he has the parties, what he does with trash. We have all this trash problems. That never has been addressed either.
You heard Shirley talk about our code officer, Tammy? Talk to her about the trash.
Tammy?
Tammy Edmonds.
Will that do any good?
Yeah.
Sure. She's back.
She's great.
I'm hoping that I don't have to come up here again about the road. I'd like to hear something about soon, about having my street done, and something about the drainage around here, because it's bad. It really is bad. And I mean, you know, it's not only my street, it's each group, we're all in bad shape back that way.
Those two men sitting right there in the third row, they are our hydrologists, and they're looking at drainage issues all over the city.
Yeah, I think, I think they took some of my stuff information last time.
Okay. Bear with us a little bit longer, but at least we're moving forward.
Ma'am, you mentioned you don't have law enforcement. What do you mean when you say you don't have law enforcement?
There's no one that ever comes out there. If you call for an ambulance or anything, since my street is half of it, or part of it, like fourth of it, is Texas City and then Dickinson, the always the issue is which, who should come there, Texas City or Dickinson?
So, there's issues like your station?
There always is. And even when my husband and I, every time I have to call ambulance for him, it was always twenty-five minutes, twenty minutes. You know, and it shouldn't be like that.
I agree. That should be resolved.
You know, and like I said, patrolmen, they never come out there. We have break-ins and stuff, they'll never, Councilman.
We can address that, we can resolve that quickly. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Rosemarie. Item A, consent agenda. The following items are considered routine by the city council via an act of amendment motion. There will not be a separate discussion on these items unless council member requests, in which event the item will be removed, consented agenda, and discussed after. Voted by Councilman Wilson to approve the consent agenda. Second by Councilman Dietz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. The motion carries. Item nine, consideration of possible action concerning zoning case S U P dash eighteen dash one eight three zero and ordinance of the city of Dickinson, Texas, amending comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city, ordinance number four two zero dash two thousand and one is here to for amended to grant specific use permit number S U P dash eighteen dash one eight three zero, allowing applicant to use the property for a church located at thirty-seven twenty Spruce Drive in Dickinson, Texas, Galveston County, Texas, presently is owned interstate commercial, providing for the incorporation of a preamble directing a change accordingly of official zoning act of the city, providing a penalty amount not to exceed two thousand dollars for each state violation hereof, and providing a repeal clause, a savings clause, severability clause, and an effective date.
Move to approve in two.
Motion by Councilman Suderman to approve. Second by Councilman King, ending discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Item ten, consideration possible, oh, I think, he wants to talk about ten, thought it was nine. Item ten, consideration possible action concerning a resolution of the city council of the city of Dickinson, Texas, supporting competitive sealed bid one eight two zeros for desilting of ditches and culverts to J Simmons Group Incorporated, authorizing the city administrator to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate such agreements, providing for the incorporation of preamble, and providing an effective date.
May I be approved?
Second by Councilman Dietz to approve. Second by Councilman Henderson. Brian?
I believe this representative of the J Simmons Group, would you like to come up to the front, gentlemen, just to introduce yourselves?
My name is Freddie Stoller. I'm a part of the construction of J Simmons Group.
Okay, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We can start.
We're actually currently doing a, almost a sister project with this, just a little bit larger than the city of Houston. Right in our plan, we should be done with it by Christmas. But I'm looking to get started in this for Christmas.
Do you have any kind of timeframe to completion? Is it a three-month job, a six-month job, or?
Well, we have everything changed for last season.
Can you work with water in the ditches?
Definitely.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
We got enough that.
Any other questions?
How long does the normal relief take once you come through clearing? What is, do you have a period of time maintenance will be required to keep something of that nature from taking place again?
Well, as far as the, you know, once we get in and we establish the flow line, we'll work from downstream up. So as we're digging, you will get immediate relief as we move forward. As far as timeframe for, you know, to have to come back for maintenance, you know, I can't. It all depends on, you know, a lot of different elements. But as we continue to progress downstream, we'll have immediate relief. You know, then we're going to come back and, you know, grass and make things. I wish I could stand here and say, it's like a Christmas present where you open it up and there it is. But, you know, unfortunately, it's not. Due to the weather, you know, just on a side note, I've got a project that I've had, a twenty-nine day project I started Labor Day and I'm still there, so. You know, we're, we are, like I said, a sister project in Houston. We're pursuing it, we've got four crews on it going. And once we come down, I hope that that is with at least two crews.
Great, thank you. Brian, do you have anything to add?
What else?
Chris Tucker?
Good evening. Question about the three oh four Hughes Road. Brian, on a couple of things, it was posted on Facebook and I don't know if you got it, that some of these descriptions were inaccurate. Did we get that?
Yes, we did.
Okay, great. Just want to make sure. They had like Longchamp, well, road, just a lane, that type of thing. I have a couple of questions for either you guys or that gentleman, I'm not sure which. When you desil, I'm going to use that board, what are you going to do with the, what do you take out the ditches? Where are you going to go?
You'll need to come back to the mic.
Per the agenda, I believe it says that they are responsible for removal.
Right. I just want to know if the deposit here?
It is the deposit.
Greg, do you have an answer to this?
The answer is they'll be legally disposed of and the contract will make that determinate.
Are you sure? I mean, if they're here somewhere else, they're all been locked.
But it depends on what happens in this group of association. Once we're worked on, we call for our, as our hall members to determine where.
Okay, that's fair enough. That's what I'm meaning. I have a couple of questions. It's that, if I understand it right, it's approximately three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the actual work. Management's about seventy-five thousand. Based on what I heard earlier, the city is talking about four million dollars in street projects in about twenty-four months. You waive the tax for twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen?
Twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen. So for twenty eighteen, is the anticipation we're going to have drainage checks?
I'm confused.
I'm confused.
No.
No.
Okay.
You've been done with twenty eighteen.
Okay. So one of my questions is, where's the money going to come from? I mean, there have been reports in media and other places saying there's not money available. So we're talking, you know, four and a half million dollars, four million dollars for the street projects. We have another, you know, four hundred and fifty, four hundred and thirty-five thousand here, plus another project to do. And it's my understanding that election rate was low, approximately fifty percent. Mine's already been spent, so that was, I think, the basis for, there will not be a refund for what was collected. So where is the funding coming from is one of my questions. Perhaps you guys, access fund that I haven't seen in the budget or?
So the nine million, specific to this contract, the nine million, I mean, the nine miles is going to be eligible for reimbursement. So it'll be a ninety-ten cost share. Ninety-ten cost share. So, and then the six miles we put in as additional quantities, that's on an add these basis and council has not obligated those dollars at this point. To your point that we're still, we're going to make sure all the cash works itself.
Okay, that's what I wasn't sure of. One other point, this goes back to the street project. Talking about the street width, which comes into play here too, to an extent. Ordinance calls for a twenty-eight-foot street.
I'm sorry.
The ordinance calls for a twenty-eight-foot wide street for emergency vehicles to be able to pass back and forth. So I heard twenty or twenty-one, if I'm not mistaken, twenty-two. So you may want to take that into consideration when you're looking at streets and what we're doing with these drainage projects. If you know different than me, tell me. I wouldn't pull it off with the city ordinance.
No, they're just, they're.
For new subdivisions.
Okay, so that's for new subdivisions, so for not reconstruction? I'm sorry, did you?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Ditches.
Thank you.
All right, thank you guys.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Item eleven, consideration possible action concerning a resolution of the city council of the city of Dickinson, Texas, approving a professional services agreement with Hewitt Solers Incorporated for the construction management service for desilting of ditches and culverts, and authorizing the city administrator to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate an agreement for such services, providing for the incorporation of preamble, and providing an effective date. Vouch by Councilman Wilson to approve. Second by Councilman, he hasn't got a second.
Second.
King? Discussion?
As stated, this is for the construction management, will be managed by Hewitt Soler. Greg Wine over here is available for any questions about the contract. Time to motion on that, so.
Any questions, comments? We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, Chris?
All right, I'll go ahead.
Okay. The motion carries. Item twelve, consideration possible action concerning resolution of the city council of the city of Dickinson, Texas, awarding request for proposal number one eight one three for debris removal services to Crowder Gulf LLC, and authorizing the city administrator to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate an agreement for such services, providing for the incorporation of preamble, and providing an effective date.
May I be approved?
Vouch by Councilman Dietz to approve. Second by Councilman King. Discussion?
Yes. Where's the list of where they're going to pick up?
Cemetery Road and Bridge, River and Bridge.
That is correct. That's the first target of this. And then afterwards, it'll become a preposition contract, just as our, this is for wet period removal.
Any questions, comments?
This is part of that grant from the N R C S.
Right. Claire? We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion carries. Item thirteen, consideration possible action concerning resolution of the city council of the city of Dickinson, Texas, awarding request for proposal number one eight one four for debris monitoring service to Tetra Check Incorporated, and authorizing the city administrator to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate an agreement for such services, providing for the incorporation of preamble, and providing an effective date.
May I be approved?
Vouch by Councilman Dietz to approve. Second by Councilman Decker. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion carries. Item fourteen, consideration possible action concerning the apartment of an interim fire marshal.
Is it, I'd like Luke to approve this before I, is, can we change this to say from interim to just fire marshal? Even though the agenda is interim or permanent, whatever? Take away the term interim?
Sure.
You can?
I mean, if that's what you want to do, they still at will employees, whether they're interim or whatever their title may be, they're serving in the capacity as fire marshal. So y'all can apply as necessary.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Do you want to?
Luke, you make appointment of fire marshal.
Bert Huddles?
Yes. Yes.
And the reason I put this on the agenda is Bert told me that T Cole, which used to be T Close? T Close?
T Close.
The PD part and the Texas Commission on Fire Protection, they require someone to be appointed as the department head or the chief administrator in order to file paperwork with both those agencies. So Bert was just kind of acting in that capacity, but this makes it a little more legal so he can represent the city in the capacity he's supposed to. So we have a motion by Councilman Wilson. Second by Councilman Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion carries. Item fifteen, consideration, let me see, Chris, did you want to talk on something else here? Chris?
No ma'am, I'm not right now.
Okay. Item fifteen, consideration possible action concerning ordinance of the city of Dickinson, Texas, affecting participation of the city employees in the Texas municipal retirement system, granting the additional rights, credits, and benefits authorized by section eight five two point two oh five of Title B Government Code as amended, providing for the incorporation premises and providing an effective date.
Luke, approve.
Vouch by Councilman Wilson to approve. Second by Councilman King. Also, I think, I had a discussion on this with some of the staff that I think it may hinder some of.